At this time on May 5th, 2017. We have three sets of minutes. I'm afraid that I personally have not yet looked at the grievance here in minutes. I have looked at the last Monday's board meeting minutes and the special board meeting that lasted all of two or three minutes.
Three minutes, I reckon.
On Friday, so other than the grievance, unless the two of you have a few.
I haven't read the grievance.
Okay, so we'll table, we'll continue to table the grievance. As far as the regular meeting last week and the special board meeting, are we good to go with those minutes?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Consensus.
Yeah, consensus. Okay, Caroline has given us three letters that require signature and she's still here, so we thought we would review them and sign them just at the beginning of the meeting. And then we'll go to community input. So I want us to Mr. Brunel, who's been here several times about the damage to his columns. And this letter says that the columns, you know, Michael and Jeff went out, the columns are in the town's right of way. Therefore susceptible is not the word, but they're within the, they're relevant to the, our winter plowing policy. So we regret that we're not going to pay for that much. So this one says, the letter says something similar to the Witten's on Pine Street with regard to stones that were plowed up and on their lawn at the beginning of their yard. Again, Mike and Jeff went out to measure and they're within the towns right of way. So for the same reason we're saying we're not going to do anything there. And then this one is a little more serious of import. And I will say that in non-public session last Monday, at the end of non-public session, the board reviewed the grievance of Officer LaJoy. And we have written a letter to his attorney, Mr. Zano, if that's how to pronounce it. Saying, Dear Mr. Zano, upon hearing and due consideration, the select board denies Officer LaJoy's grievance awaiting to suspension on January 12th, 2017. So those are the three pieces of mail and I will now sign them. And I'll give them right to you. All right, community input. Charles?
Just a simple, why can't we don't use the projector anymore? It used to have.
We didn't have it for a long time.
Yeah.
The board wasn't all that cracked about it. It requires someone to be here early enough to set it up. So I would say those are largely the reasons. Do you miss it? Would you prefer that I do it?
No, no, I was just scared, I was just scared it is.
You're talking, we're talking the lit one. That we, did, we, we ended up purchasing that.
Well, it ended up being to the town, so the town did not pay for it.
But yes, I thought.
It's the town's, it is the town's, the small one.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I sent an email earlier today about the grievance. I don't know if the board received that or not.
I saw that you had said something. I, to be honest with you, I haven't looked at it. Should we look at it?
Um, well, I just, I understand the letter for all of the legalities that are involved in it. But I had a, you know, having been here through the whole thing and thought about it for a little while, I was pretty concerned about some of the execution of policy and the all over the map with everybody's understanding of policy with the people that testified that, that evening. I.
Sorry, I'm just, let me just stop this call message.
I do that for work and I just wrote a letter expressing the concern that I had about it and that I sincerely hope that the board, regardless of the letter and the legal, will take a long, hard look at what's going on with regard to culture and policy and leadership.
Okay, well, thank you for that.
And I, and I would ask that the letter be put into the minutes and be part of the record.
Absol- absolutely.
I don't know if you automatically do that or not.
Alright, yeah.
Are we good with having?
I am just reading it now. She's scheduled at four thirty or four, I'm sorry, my clock dropped, four twenty-six. So that's our time.
Well, why don't we, why don't we read it?
If you'd like, you could read it.
I can, I can read it.
Why not since you can read it? I mean, I'm happy to read it, but I don't have a, it'll take me a minute to get it out.
To the board, as I was asked by the chair to attend and video record the police grievance public hearing, I have a few things to say about what I witnessed that night and hope you will consider my insight. I've built my own successful business over the last three years helping organizations, corporate and private, of all sizes improve culture, create and execute effective and meaningful policy and develop management and leadership skills. My professional experience in this arena was the lens through which I witnessed the hearing. While there are many issues of concern that the grievance raises for the town going forward, it was the unclear and inconsistent understanding and execution of policies by both the leadership and the subordinates in the PD that really surprised me. I strongly encourage the board to follow up thoroughly on this matter. Personnel file management, shift assignments, training schedules and overall expectations of all officers seem blurry and inconsistent to say the least. At a minimum, a comprehensive policy review and some training and development for leadership will show a desire to improve the problematic situation the board has now been exposed to. It is dangerous based on what we all saw at the hearing to say that this is an issue of only one person in the organization. Cultural change requires everyone to take accountability and then assess the situation objectively and commit to evolving and moving the organization forward. It would benefit everyone involved, show good faith on the part of the board and through then the town to resolve the issues raised by the grievance proceedings. And perhaps an unintentional outcome would also be an improvement in our ability to attach, sorry, to attract and retain new officers to our PD. I'd be happy to present a plan for how to move forward in this arena, in this area. If you think it would be helpful, thank you for your consideration, Tamara Niedzikowski. Paid in education. Thank you, Tamara. We'll take it under advisement. We'll certainly have. I'll make sure that you get a copy for the, for the record. Okay, let me just make note of that. Are there any other comments, community input? Mine?
No, I'm all set. I know exactly what you're talking about. Been watching the videos.
Okay. Let me just make a note of that. Yes.
Just, uh, thank you. If you, if, did you end up doing the tree in Morton Park? Thank you.
It came up last week.
I was just waiting for the ground to dry out.
Yeah.
The ground was very wet and I mean, you brought equipment in there, we had some kind of site, so I was just kind of waiting.
Yep.
But it's, it's all taken care of.
Beautiful. All right, well, seeing no other community input, we'll go ahead with department head. And Jeff, you are here, so let us start right with you. Do you want to start? Do you want us to go through this list? How do you?
Um, I just have, I guess, a couple of things. In my travels up and down Sligo Road, I noticed that the, the Branmore Farm is dropping manure all over the road again. We wrote them a letter about a year ago stating that, you know, it's not acceptable, it shouldn't be happened. What happens is, you know, the PD drives through it, we have to drive through it. I parked my truck in the garage, or the highway truck in the garage at night and the whole garage smells like a farm. Also today I encountered that, which I've never seen before, is they actually hang a rope across the road as a trough to kind of defer their cattle to the fields. Well, I almost ran into the rope with the highway truck. Somebody came running out of the field, you know, waving around saying, stop, and I'm like, stop. And they had a, it was, I don't know, probably a quarter inch, half inch rope, hanging across the road to kind of defer the cows.
Who is a guide to lead cows out, so what you mean?
The guide, yeah.
So they have ropes, but nobody on the road.
Exactly.
Directing them like they should.
So there's, there's a couple of problems I, I see is if a bicyclist or a motorcycle happened to come down that hill from the other end.
That would be capital.
It would have done, yeah, it would have done some bodily harm. Or even if a vehicle hit it, it would have done damage to their building because they tie it off to a tree in their building. So it probably wouldn't have done possible damage to a vehicle also. So I don't know if we want to write them a note stating that that's, I told them it's no longer allowed, like it needs to stop immediately.
Was there a time when it was ever allowed?
Can't imagine.
That seems like really dangerous.
When it used to be a dirt road, they just let, you, you would drive, the cows would be on the road with you when you were driving.
Well, that, that actually.
I remember driving through the herd with the cows, like walking along beside the car.
It still seems different from a piece of rope that you.
I think that's why the rope is there, so that the cows aren't using the whole road. Not that I'm saying it shouldn't not, but I'm just saying.
And just one other thing.
All right, let's, let's, thank you.
When they're running their manure spreader up and down the road, instead of saying in the road, they're actually, when it happens or them stopping, I've noticed that they've been, where the manure spread is so wide, they're actually going in that ditch line of the road and they're actually breaking the hot top and making excessive wheel rods in the side of the road, which is fine, but the, the wheel rods are too close to the road. So the water's not able to get away from the road to the original ditch line where the water should go. If you, if you happen to go down there, you'll see exactly what I'm talking about. So I think that that should.
Are you recommending a course of action?
I'm recommending a letter stating that it needs to stop because the road is in poor shape to begin with. And if it keeps happening, what, the road's going to deteriorate.
If the board is so willing, we can have Caroline draft it with your assistance because you seem to know exactly what the situation is. Are you, are you good with that, board?
Yeah, they need to address the rope issue because that's not proper without flaggers.
Right.
And, and the driving, so they're too, too big issue.
Like I said, the manure being spread down the road.
When you have cattle across a real road, you have to flag it.
So are you good with having Caroline draft it? Yeah. Okay, so if you would mind working with Caroline as well to do that.
Absolutely, I have no trouble with that.
Okay, thank you.
Um. We put it out in the paper a few weeks back or a couple of weeks back for help at the highway department. And we, we received two applications. I looked at both of them. And I'd like to recommend that we interview one of the people that, that applied. It's actually a guy that I worked with probably like nine, 10 years ago now. He's laid off and just looking for some part-time work. So the board's, I think it's permission, I'd like to set up a, an interview.
Is there a board member who could join you? Is that what you're?
Yes, yeah, I'd like to know what their schedules are, that somebody might be able to.
When do you want to do it?
Uh, whenever, whenever, whenever the board has a free, free moment.
I think I'll be available until next Monday during the day. Is there anyone else available? If you wonder, do you plan to do it this week?
I'd like to, yeah, if possible, I'd like to, to do it.
I can be here. That's like six. Can we do six thirty to nearly seven thirty?
I prefer to do it during working hours, so I don't have to come back.
Okay. My lunchtime, twelve.
It can be next week too, I mean, it's not set for this.
Okay. So I can do Monday during the day if you want to do either first thing or lunchtime or.
My, I'm here seven to three, if not longer, so.
I'm available on Monday also, except for noon to one, so.
What, what, what wants for you?
One of us can do it on next Monday.
Yeah.
It's the first of the day.
So Mike will take the day and I'll take the lunch shift, I'll have.
Well, it's just right now, you, so you have two people, but there's just one you're interested in.
There's one I'm interested in, yes.
But they don't have time for an interview yet, so we're both available on Monday.
Oh, I see.
They have the whole day covered.
I see, got, yeah.
Whenever he can, and you can do it.
Okay.
So I'll come back with the time?
Yeah.
Awesome.
All right, super, thank you.
Thank you. And that's it for me. Those are the things on the agenda, I see.
Oh, yeah, there are quite a few. But some I think we've already handled, like the first one is Mr. Brunel, so we've sent him a letter, so we're good there.
Yeah, just take the.
Kelwyn Drive, at last week's meeting, you know, Gary Fieldson was here. Very concerned about the state of his road. And at first he wanted you to go pick up the asphalt, then he said, no, I just want to see if I can use it. He also called Mike Bobinsky in Summersworth, and he was supposed to go out and take a look.
Bobinsky, summer's work.
I also sent Nate Mears' email of who's, for a few.
Few more weeks, he'll be in Summersworth.
Days or whatever, it will still be in Summersworth. And also Mr. Bobinsky, because I hadn't heard from Nate that. So I have not talked, talked to Mike Bobinsky in person. When I heard from Nate, I think I sent it to the board. And that is, we're not the only town with roads that are, we're, we're struggling with the repair of our roads. And, you know, on, high on their list are the better traveled roads and not the lesser traveled roads like Kelwyn.
Yes.
So, but still, nonetheless, I'm, he was, Mike Bobinsky was supposed to call me later in the day on Friday. I didn't hear from him, so I'll, I'll, I'll keep trying. At some point, we'll connect. What I would like to do nonetheless is explore with him, you know, the possibility of whenever they do Kelwyn, you know, if we could just tack it on or they could do it all and they could, you know, where they can invoice us for our part, you know, if we know what this is ahead of time, you know, those kinds of things. So just to get a general idea because hopefully it'll happen, you know, before the 2024, but there's no guarantee.
Yeah.
That we currently have it scheduled.
So, um, that's, that's great that we want to piggyback on with, with Summersworth if we're able to.
If, yeah, I don't know.
If we're able to.
Yeah.
In, when, I don't know if they're talking about doing an overlay or a reclaim, but a lot of the drainage, we have like serious drainage issues on that road. And what I mean by that is a lot of the structures are, there's actually roots and trees going through them, through the drainage pipe itself. I tried.
They have drainage pipes there?
Yep, yeah, there's one, two, three.
So they go to Summersworth? Where do they go?
They dump out behind, I'm trying to think. So when you drive in the entrance and you take that little stub off of Kelwyn, it was supposed to be cedar, and you start going around the corner right there, there's an outlet that everything drains out into the, the back, back of somebody's property. It's almost like a wetland area, so everything kind of goes out that way.
So it's draining to a land to land.
To, to land, yes. Last time I was out there, we tried with a tractor truck cutting through the roots and the roots were so big that, you know, we couldn't get through them. So I guess what I'm saying is when we do Kelwyn Drive, we're going to probably be setting structures and drainage at that point in time and probably even curbing. Because if you, I don't know if you've been out there lately, but all the curbing is, is no longer where it should be.
I mean, board, do you think it's helpful for us to get a better idea of the cost of this? So, I mean, we can just let it, let it be in the current scheme of things, which is, you know, 2024. Or if we found out what it might cost us to do it, we could see if a slot opened up before then. Cost-wise. So we could ask Chris if you wanted, you know, when he's around, if you don't think it's an imposition, just.
Trying to see where we're at for.
Yeah, just to get an, you know, even just a ballpark of what.
Rough idea. Yeah, so I think there's one, two, three, four structures.
Yeah, I'm sorry to hear that, because that will definitely, that's going to add the expense.
Yeah, there's four, there's four structures and. Yeah, so there's, you know, a couple hundred feet of pipe also. With that.
That will make this more.
But like I said, the roots have actually grown into the, the pipe and actually into one of the structures here. It's all the roots.
And this is on Kelwyn?
On Kelwyn, yeah.
And it's just drainage?
Yep.
So we'll be able to do that part? That won't be a problem?
What do you mean, we'll be able to do that?
We'll do that part, right? Just replacing the piping for the drainage?
No. With just myself?
No, with your, with your crew.
With one guy? One other part-time guy, Jody? It's, it's labor intensive, like you, you, it's a three, four man job to, to start setting structures and laying pipe and I, I don't.
Yeah, but we have time to prepare. Like, we're not doing it this year.
Well, yeah, I mean, maybe down the road if we have a full-time, another full-time guy or something, yeah, no problem.
Good, but you can do that, right? That's why we have the backup, that's why we have the equipment. Because it's not a sixty-foot culvert we're hopping like we, just like a, just like the Old Mill Lane culvert. Right?
We'll look at it when the time comes, I guess.
Right, but, yeah, I don't know if it's, I don't know if it'll wait ten years because the trees are growing in it. What if it keeps draining, right?
But even so, I mean, the structures themselves, we, we will need to get some idea of the overall, just the ballparky figure.
I don't think so much of us might do that for free, just to be nice though.
What, cost it?
No, just do it.
Cost it out, but just do it? Yeah, probably not.
Yeah, probably.
Yeah, probably not, or, or it'd be like twenty, thirty or something. Okay, um, smoke test notifications?
I guess Caroline sent them out today.
Oh, do we know what we're doing though?
She gave a three-week window of when.
Okay.
The project's going to be happening.
Oh, okay.
So we said three weeks from, we will be doing X, Y, and Z.
Very good. So this is for South, the South Street, the.
Yeah.
Foundry.
Yeah.
Okay, great. And the website, is it going to go out on the website?
Yeah, it'll be on the website and I'll post it on the board.
Okay, perfect. Perfect. Driveway on Stockdale, so I guess that there is a per, per sort of, a building permit. There were, there were some issues that I saw, you know, Tom and, and our planning board, planning consultant. So has that been resolved by?
It has, yeah.
Okay, so everybody's on board if it doesn't need to go to planning?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so then when the permit comes, we'll just treat it as a demand here. Okay, excellent. And you're fine with?
I don't see a problem with it, yeah.
Okay. Farm on Sligo, I think that's what you were.
Yeah.
Telling us about. Pine, straight the rocks, that was also.
Taken care of.
Uh, yeah. Roping off the Lower Mill Sinkhole, so the studio is, the studio open weekend is this weekend.
I'm planning on doing it tomorrow, I have grade stakes in the, the, the river.
Okay. And you're gonna, we're just thinking of a, not a wide, you know, just enough to.
No, just where they, just where that plate is separated, I want to vague in stakes and kind of divert towards the river.
Okay.
And it'll be a small area that's roped off where people won't be able to, or should not walk.
Well, at least they will have been alerted.
Yeah.
So, thank you. Catch Basin on Front Street.
Yeah.
You sent us email about that, so why don't we just.
I did.
Start from scratch.
So there's a structure on Front Street that I thought was just a framing grade, but actually the, all the, the, I guess cobblestone actually collapsed in on itself. So we ended up rebuilding the, the, the structure Friday.
Who did you work with?
Show and Roadway Services was the guy that I used. I called two other companies and they weren't available, so we ended up using him for that job.
Okay, and is it?
It's a temporary, it's a temporary fix. When we redo downtown, we're going to be needing to put a structure in the ground that has blocked. Because what happens, back in the day, they just used cobblestone and mortar to build their structures and what's happened, everything's caving in. Probably the frost we've had this year and everything else and the high rains didn't help things out any. So it is, we hand shoveled everything, put, took the bricks out layer by layer and remortared everything the best we could. We bought a riser, put a riser on and then we put the framing grade on and then paved around it. So there used to be a really big hole right there and we brought it up so it was, so it's level with the road.
So why, why are you referring to it as a temporary?
Because eventually the rest of them cobblestone are going to end up falling in and it doesn't have a bottom to it either, so.
So it will be, so will we redo all of those or at least we're, will we?
Yeah.
To redo all of those?
Yeah, we'll be putting a, we'll be putting a, you know, four or five foot structure in there.
Okay. All right, any questions on that part?
No, do we have a, I guess, do we have a list of who we called?
Nope.
So who did you call?
I called Huzzy, I called Guy Construction, and I called Show and Roadway Services.
And so, I guess, just because, like Dover has a list that they, they set a bidding order and like you get first call, you get second call. We don't have anything like that, so this is the time of the year to start something like that, I guess.
That's a good idea.
Do you know what I mean, right?
If the town wants to put one together, that's great. I, I mean, I have no trouble with that.
So we, we would have to put out an RFP this time?
Right, right, and it's just that saying, you're going to give us this price per hour.
Yeah.
And they start and you just have a list to call through.
Yeah. That's a great idea, so.
You want to, I will man that.
Super, excellent.
Anything new on the backup that you want?
Yeah, um, John Deere stopped by Friday. They actually called Chadwick Bay Ross to see if they wanted it back, to purchase the machine from them. And they said, no, we want nothing to do with it. So pretty much where they stopped producing this machine, we're going to get auction price for it from the way I understand. So they're going to give us forty-five thousand for our machine and they want an additional fifty thousand dollars. So a total of ninety-five thousand to bump up to a John Deere.
Are you saying that Baldwin no longer makes backups?
Nope. Nope, they don't make the machine. So therefore the value of that machine, it's, it's like the, I guess the Volkswagen, it's with the whole diesel thing. They're, they stopped producing them, I guess, so they had issues, so now they're not worth.
What's the current state? I mean, is it?
It still has issues. I went to use it Saturday and it wouldn't go in gear. It took me probably four or five minutes of going forward, reverse, forward, reverse, forward, reverse. And finally it slammed into gear and made a hellacious bang and it's worked fine since.
So we paid sixty-five thousand for it, right?
No, we paid ninety, we paid a.
A close to a hundred.
Yeah, it's like ninety-seven thousand for that machine.
No. For that machine?
Yep. It was like a hundred and, a hundred and.
It's in the.
It was like a hundred and ten, a hundred and ten thousand and they gave us fifteen thousand for a trade-in on the dresser. And it brought that down to.
It was under a hundred, but close to.
Yeah, it was like ninety-five or ninety-six thousand.
It would have been like twenty, fourteen maybe.
It's a third, yeah, thirteen or fourteen.
All right, any questions, comments on that?
I'm still waiting to get back from, from Case and I'm waiting to get back from Cat.
Are you still, yeah, but if we're talking tens of thousands of dollars.
That was one company. I'm hoping the others may.
Okay. Are you still wanting to go into non-public?
We can, yes.
No, are you, are you wanting to go into, I mean, is that still something that you want to do?
We can, we can, we can wait till next week. It's, we can wait till next week.
Okay. Mike, are you here to talk to us?
I, I just had a quick question.
Mm-hmm.
I'm getting calls about the watering lawns.
Yes.
And the latest information from the state, which I brought with me, shows that we're no longer in a moderate drought. We're in, let's see, what's that terminology, abnormally dry. And with what you're going through the weekend, I think you probably are going to cut that back, but it's dropping considerably. I just saw a news article in USA Today, which mentions Manchester has repealed the water ban. So it's happening in the state, I mean, we're absolutely backing what you guys do.
Appreciate it.
But we're getting a lot of calls, people want to, you know, this is the time to get the lawns going.
It is only the lawn, we did try to clarify that. I think that there was some concern that, that the, that the ban was more comprehensive. It's just lawn watering.
So I just bring this with you in the article.
Yeah, it happens, that's humble, because when we did it, you know, we had checked in with DES.
Agreed a hundred percent with you.
Yeah, it was moderate and they were, yeah.
There's a big difference now. I think you'll find a bigger one next Thursday.
Even last week, we, two weeks ago, we checked with the state.
It was moderate.
They said it was moderate.
Yeah, moderate and they were saying.
Well, they updated every Thursday?
Ah, they do.
And that actually gives you, I'll go right on and look at it.
Yeah.
This just yellow area is the first category here, which is normally dry. That's the only one left with moderate.
Ah, right here.
And that's a bike key, so that's not a variety. And there's, and.
It was on radio a little bit, like massive, they can't watch the other.
Yeah, that's right.
They use two sources, Amanda, around the other.
It's mostly massive, but it's coming back every week.
But they're on the road again, so.
They're actually in the same zone as we are.
So, well, thank you, Mike, we appreciate it.
So I just thought I'd pass that on.
It does change quickly, yeah, because we just did this and it was, it was still moderate, so. Yes, Charlie, do you want?
Okay, I got some information. They do that every Thursday on Channel Nine.
That's what, that's what Mike said.
Yeah, and they didn't include Wednesday's rain on, so they should have a good update Thursday.
Does the board want to consider changing it tonight? What, what is the board's thought on this?
You guys can wait till next week and see what comes by next.
Well, it's going to rain all weekend, so according to this.
Yeah.
All right, so what, so.
By Monday, we should know more.
So, so if, if you get, continue to get calls, could you please tell them and that we will be considering this again on Monday, next Monday?
Good, that was it.
The rain, so they shouldn't have to.
Thank you, Mike, we appreciate it. What?
The rain, so we shouldn't have to water the lawn anymore.
All right, excellent. I don't see cheap do charm, but. Um, I don't see Chief Ducharme, but, um, when I was in the office this morning, Bill Irvin came by, wondering what was happening with the Space Needs Committee, so.
I have too.
So, could you check in with, uh, Chief Ducharme?
Thought he was actually gonna be in tonight.
Yeah, he may come, sometimes he comes after his rubbery or something.
I just, um, Miles England walked by, and he was supposed to give him keys tonight, so.
Okay.
He may be.
So maybe he'll come in later?
Yeah.
Alright, so we'll, we'll hope, if, if not, and if we forget to follow, come back with this, if you could just check in with him and.
I plan on it. There's also, um, there was an issue with the road race this weekend too.
Oh, is this the big extreme, the one that didn't think that they were gonna need, which road race, I'm sorry?
The one, uh, with the, from the Saturday night, down the hill.
Yeah, the sort of extreme, whatever, and they didn't think they'd need.
Yeah, apparently, one of the residents on Holden to Go Hill Road was harassing runners. Not the per, not the family that, or the, the couple that lives right on the, the trail, that we've had issues with in the past, it's another person.
Well, is this something for the police to manage, is it some, okay?
Yeah, no, it is, I'll go on to ask them.
Oh, I see, okay, got it, got it, thank you.
The follow-ups.
Alright, so.
Cause the, the folks from the ATV club called me, and told me that I guess they were out assisting with the road race, I guess.
With the, oh, that was nice, hmm, excellent. Okay. Then we'll go right into town administration, okay?
Yeah.
Alright, long-term financing, so, uh. So Caroline and I have been working on cash flow, and we are fine through the June, June tax bills, you know, for now and through, through June. And, but then we were also looking a little more carefully on what, what and when we might need the money for the cul- oh, not the culvert, for the transfer station. And we think that, um, we are going to be fine with also once the money comes in from the, the June tax bills. So, so that would relieve us of the need to do short-term financing for the transfer station.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you, we put that in there, this is from, um, so by about mid-July, which is when we're going to get our, um, money from the bond bank, we'll have, if we operate pretty much like last year, we'll have at least three million collected by then. And so that will, um, that will allow us to cover the, the transfer station materials, so that, um, cost. And so then by mid-July, we'll get the, the money from, from the bank. So, and then we will learn more about the culvert short-term financing, either later on this week or the beginning of next week. Hopefully, we can have a loan resolution from Kenny Buck Savings Bank in time for next Monday's meeting. So, the thing that I, uh, think we should spend some time on is the fire engine long-term financing. We have two options that we've been working on, one is the USDA Community Facilities Loan, and the other one is New Hampshire Bond Bank. And, you know, we've been interested in the USDA because it has two point seven five, um, rate. But as I pushed forward to the board this morning, uh, it was information from our contact at USDA who says, even with the continuing resolution that passed over the weekend, they are unclear about the pool of money that's going to be available to them for, for this community facilities.
Yeah.
And so, I, I think it sort of leads us to the bond bank, I don't know if you all agree, if there's another way you wanna think about this, but.
I would rather go with them, I have less hurdles than anyone.
The bond bank?
I'm afraid we'll take the USDA loan and they'll ask us to do stuff we aren't wanting to do.
Mike, the bond bank?
Yeah, I think it's unfortunate, but the, um, the, uh, the uncertainty around additional requirements and, uh, uncertainty around, um, uh, federal budget, I think was, uh, pretty much tells the force, I think, a little bit.
Alright, well, that's good, so then what I will do this, uh, this week is I will talk to the bond bank, determine the amount of, well, the transfer station's a hundred and ninety, the fire station comes out to be about three hundred and forty-five, I think, cause what we can do is, you know, subtract the hundred and nine thousand, but we can, because we've been authorized with four hundred and fifty, we can put in the bond council, which is there in order to support this, so we can put in a few thousand for the bond council, and we can put in the short-term interest that we might incur in, um, in December, January, whenever that sort of in-between time happens. And so, if, so then they can put the paperwork together for the three hundred and, or whatever I said, forty-five thousand for that, hundred and ninety for the transfer station. Uh, the one, I'm trying to get our bond council to agree to a fifteen-year term, she's the woman apparently who has to, uh, do that. So, worst case, it's ten years, better case, it's fifteen years. So, and so then next Monday, what I will work and try to coordinate is having a town clerk here, I don't know if Kate will be back, but either Kate or Andrea, to be here, and we'll have the loan resolution, this will be similar to what we did for the USDA, I don't, it'll probably be two separate ones? I don't know, maybe not, maybe it's just one, cause it's the bond bank, but it'll be a, a loan resolution for, uh, the bond bank for the long-term financing. So I'll work, I'll work on that and, and keep you posted. So I, I agree with that decision, I think there's, you know, when your contact tells you she's not sure she'll have any money in the, in the pool of money, and we need to make it, we need to have a decision, so kind of, the decision kind of makes itself. So the other thing that, that I've been getting a little bit of information on, that I want at least introduced tonight, is the New Hampshire Public Deposit Investment Pool that we have received info about in the past, but, uh, have not seen a reason to use it, need it, whatever. So, it is, uh, set up by the state of New Hampshire, as other states have, uh, similar pools, it's just run by, they contract out the financial management of it, and that was the, the firm that, I, I don't remember its name, that we've got the, every joint E-man from. So what they can do for us is allow us to set up individual accounts for our three projects. So the transfer station, the, uh, culverts, and the fire engine, so we can have a really good audit trail on the monies coming in from the proceeds of the loans, the monies going out, um, and the, you know, we would get whatever the interest rate is, point eight, point eight percent. Eight tenths of one percent, in other words, not, yeah.
Right.
Um, so, and I guess we had, we used it, I think, as our investment location at some point before. Was that before you were treasurer, Mike?
Yeah, yes.
She said a lot of people left them during a, a recession. I don't know if at, at that point, commercial banks were able to provide better interest rates or what it was, but anyway, um, towns are starting, have started to come back, uh, to them, but what I like is it, so there's no cost. If we were to set up individual accounts through Citizen, we might likely have a fee associated with, with each of those.
We would, yeah.
So this is at no cost, we've got a, a, a nice audit trail.
There's no fee?
There's, there's the, there's no fee, I mean, the fee is, this company extracts its fee, but it comes out of the, it's an aggregated fee, so it just reduces what the rate of return.
Orange, doesn't it?
Yeah, on, on everybody. So, so then the question is, how do you want to pursue this? She's happy to come and meet with the board? We could just start filling out the paperwork, uh, you know, I sent you links to the site. I mean, do, do you want to chat with her, do you, um, do you wanna set up a conference call? Do you wanna just say, no, this is a good idea, we'll start filling out the paperwork?
I mean, I understand the concept, I don't know what, what more, what other questions we would have that we could add.
She was just offering, and I, you know, and I'm offering it to you, so I'm happy to start, you know, work with Caroline and get the paperwork started on that. I mean, we're gonna, it's gonna come back to us, right? I mean, nothing happens until we, we do it.
Right.
So shall I just start that paperwork process with her?
Sure.
Okay, I will do that, thank you. Uh, and then the, this other comment is just, you know, I'm also gonna try to coordinate that we have the bond bank resolution ready for us to review and look at next Monday. Do you have any other question about short, long-term financing? Okay, I did, uh, hear back from Kenny Buck Savings Bank today, I had the conversation with him, and we should hear maybe later on this week or the beginning of next week, so maybe we'll have a resolution from him as well. And I will tell him it's just for the culvert. grievance decision, we've, uh, talked about that. Appointments, I don't know if there's a contract for, um. One thing I noted is that the, we, we, um, calculated the budget based on a fifty-five dollar an hour rate, and he now has a sixty-five dollar an hour rate. So we'll just need to watch it, means we have, you know, instead of ten hours a month, and we haven't been using him for ten hours a month, we, we have less than that, so.
And that contract doesn't say hourly rate, does it, did I miss it?
No, it's just our budget, yeah, it's just the hourly rate, so it's up to us to sort of manage.
Does he know, cause there's no, he know, he's worked with us about that, he knows that we're.
He has to, he knows he's author, he doesn't do anything until we authorize him.
Oh, yeah. He's authorized, yeah.
Right.
Yes, so, right, and he's, and Michael, I saw that exchange, so.
I mean, unless we have a, a really big project, we wouldn't come in and we're close to ten hours a month, I guess.
Right, I guess it depends on whether this technical review committee, that might be a source, but there's, there hasn't been anything going on, so.
Right.
Alright, yes, thank, thank you. So are we good with signing this then? Okay, good with signing, alright, then, based on the, actually, because it's a contract, I would prefer motion.
I hope that we, we hire John Krebs, we are planning consultant for twenty seventeen.
Second, okay, and I will just add at a rate of sixty-five dollars an hour. Alright, uh, any discussion? All of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Dated this first day of May, that looks like March. Oh, it's gonna require all of us? It doesn't require any, but it's, 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 um. We might as well do it then. Also?
Yep.
Thank you. Um, sorry, I started to get onto the next one, I said, alright, so the next item of business is just a reminder to all of us that, um, we're having a public hearing at six o'clock on Monday to, um, so the public can comment on the, uh, ratification of the March sixteenth elections, and, and also to let us all, uh, let me say publicly that what the House Bill three twenty-nine did, that was signed into law on April twenty-first, was that it itself ratified the elections of any officials on that day. So Michael, our town treasurer, the budget committee, they were all ratified by that piece of legislation on March twenty-first. What this particular public hearing will do is one, uh, is allow the public to say whatever comments they'd like to make about the whole process of postponing. And then the board after will review a resolution that ratifies everything else that happened that, at that election, which is not much, it's SB two and the zoning. Uh, but nonetheless, it's sort of a CYA and a good thing, I think, to, for us to do. But just want everybody to know that Michael and our town treasurer and the budget committee, and I don't know that there was the fire chief, we were all duly elected as of, I think we were duly elected anyway according to every, you know, this town, but now the legislature leaves that as well.
Welcome back again.
Yeah. So, that's really good, because now all, e, e, you know, even our long-term financing, if, when I'm away, you'll be able to, you know, do whatever needs to happen, so that's a really good thing. So the resolution itself, I drafted something, I don't know if you had time to look at it, I did hear back from Charlie, I asked him, and the one, one change that I would make based on what he said is that I would add town council and bond council to the list that we had conferred with on that day.
That looked good to me.
Okay, so I'll make that change, I'll send it out again so you can take a look at it, and that's what we will be, uh, working on, on, on Monday.
Working on.
And I'll put it right up at the beginning of the meeting in case anybody who's here at the public hearing wants to stick around and see what we do.
Okay.
Does that seem okay?
Sounds great.
Okay, excellent. A water ban, so, we've talked about, uh, you know, Mike was kind enough to bring us the information, so we'll, we'll cogitate on that in the coming week. But I put this here because, um, you know, there was that, a water ordinance that we kind of drafted based on Exodus, I think, that we realized we weren't gonna be able to execute because it, it was too time-consuming, we weren't gonna have enough time. So my question to the board is, is this something that, uh, we would like to consider to have in our toolkit? You know, a, a better fleshed-out water ordinance that we can, uh, rely on if something like this happens again? Because our only option, as I recall, was.
Was lawns.
Was lawns, so it was the only thing we could do without, you know, having our own water ordinance. So.
I like the idea, but I think we have a lot on our plate right now.
We have a lot on our plate.
Can we table it till August?
Put it on the on-hold list?
Yeah, put it at the bottom.
Mike, is that, okay.
Like, I like the idea, but.
Alright, so we like the idea, yeah, I, I'm absolutely with you, but we think it's a good idea.
Let's get our other, stuff's a while. Yes, I don't wanna lose track of how that.
Okay. Perfect. Sounds great. Uh, and speaking of ordinances, we kind of. We skipped you, Michael, that was not what we wanted to do, we didn't skip you. So, would you like to talk about the housing standards?
Sure, yeah, I finished it up this afternoon, um, going over the, um, the Dover ordinance slash, um, Rollinsford ordinance that we think was adopt, was adopted but never signed off on. I have it shared in the folder for you, for you.
Yes, yeah.
I mean, it covers the, the establishment of a, of a housing standard board, which we've discussed before with Mr. Clark, that's basically the building inspector, the health inspector, the fire chief, and one select board member.
And that, and that's the housing standards board?
Yeah, and it's to review complaints, um, so if, uh, there's a section where if ten people in town complain about a certain structure, you can go and investigate it, but if, you know, there are tenants that have issues, they bring it forward, so there's a, now the, we, they have to wait a week, and then we assign it to someone, and then a couple of weeks go by, and then we have to wait for the response back. This way the, the.
It authorizes?
Yeah, there's a board of power to, to look at the complaint and then report back to the select board.
Yeah.
So you don't, you, you, you cut out a couple of weeks of waiting time, just to get, you know, reviewed.
So what do you?
And there's, you know, the sections on, you know, what, the minimum, you know, having different stuff with bathrooms, showers, you shouldn't have a kitchen in your living room, or, you know, the, all of these were created because there were problems and other misuses, right? Yeah, we borrowed it from something else.
How extensive?
It's pretty, I mean, it's pretty in-depth, I mean, it's, it's not overly cumbersome though, it's.
How many pages? I wish I had looked at it yet.
Fifteen.
Yeah.
Fif, five zero, fifteen, thank you.
Yeah, fifteen. Sorry, thirty separate sections, I think, or twenty-nine.
So, I mean, I would like to review it, yeah, and I'm sure Jody would like to review too, so can we give?
But this is what was, and I, and I compared it to what was sent forwarded to us, um, from a previous select board, uh, in two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen.
Yeah, whatever that happened, it matches it.
I, I cleaned up, you know, there were a few places where it was of the city attorney, well, we obviously don't have a city attorney, so I put the town council.
Yeah.
Changed the town of Rollinsford from the city of Dover, there were a few they missed, so, but it's just simple things like that.
So, how, how does this sound? What if we, um, next week, we're gonna have, you know, the public hearing, we've got probably loan ordinance resolutions, can we review this at fifth on the fifteenth of May, and then if the board?
Review on the fifteenth and then?
If the board is okay with that, and then you, we can set, schedule a public hearing?
Yeah.
Uh, you know, just tentatively, I mean, you can do it in my absence.
When are you, well.
I mean, I'm only, I.
So the fifteenth and the, the twenty-second, but the next one is Memorial, there is twenty-ninth, so we won't do that.
Right, I will not be here on the twenty-second or June fifth.
Oh, okay.
And if we met on June twenty-ninth, I wouldn't be here either, but we're not, we need it on June twenty-eighth, we just.
I may try that.
May.
Yeah, I may try that.
What, I'm sorry, thank you.
Fine, fine with the fifth or the twelfth, we can wait till the twelfth if you wanna be here for it, it's fine by me.
So tentatively the twelfth, is that?
Twelfth.
Does, does that work?
That's six.
Twelfth of June?
Yep. Okay, let's do that.
Get it, I'll send it back.
Do you want, are we coming in early?
Yeah, we just, let's say six. Right, that's, that's, and so far it's worked. Right, that's, so far it's worked to have them at that time. Can you be here?
Yeah.
I'm looking at our.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Appreciate it. So June twelfth. And we will review it on May fifteenth, is that?
Yeah, it's just part of the meeting, right?
Yeah, just as part of the meeting, yeah. Okay. Alright, so we're putting on hold the water ban ordinance, understood. And next week though, we will review the current water ban. Okay. Um. Technical assistance grant application. So we talked about this last Monday, and the board said for me to go ahead and work with Kyle Pimental. By the way, he was spelled correctly in the notes.
I know, that's because you told me.
Oh, I see, okay. So.
I have a big P in.
Oh, I see, okay. So you had gone back yourself and corrected it. Good, thank you. So, so the board had said for me to continue working with Kyle Pimental on the grant application. What I didn't know is that it was due that Friday. So, so I checked in with the board. We decided to have a meeting. We noticed it, let everybody know. And Jody and I met on Friday at eight o'clock.
Yeah.
And we went through some of the issues that I had raised earlier about the grant. In other words, are we gonna have to put out, even if we get reimbursed, is it, are we gonna have to pay cash? You know, is it gonna have a hit on what we are authorized to expend? The answer was no. The SRPC and the New Hampshire, will actually be the grant recipient from the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. So the money changing and the, and the reporting will happen at that, at that, in that area. And my other question, the question I had was, are we gonna have to do any matching even of contributed time and effort? And the answer is noted that too, it's not required. Should, he, he may want to check in with the board periodically to say if we've talked about it at a meeting or whatever, so that he can document that and they can use it in their reporting to the DES, but it is not a requirement in our part. So to that end, the select board that met that night agreed to sign that grant application, and it's now at DES. We got a confirmation from DES on Monday. Is that today? Yes, this morning. And I don't know when we'll hear. I think she may have said, but I don't remember. So. Town hall, I've asked Caroline to get in touch with Howard Hammond to, just to get us some kind of feedback on what's going on out there. And then the C A W survey, which I think meant something to me when I put it in the agenda. If you'll give me a minute, I'm glad I left tracks. I'm gonna check the email of April twenty-seventh. I don't really know. Okay, it is. Dear Coastal Community Leader, Communities in Coastal Hampshire leading the way to prepare for severe weather and changing climate conditions, please help us maintain and strengthen those efforts by taking the survey of natural coastal community needs. Surveys designed to help identify the most pressing needs. It consists of eight questions. It should take me more than about fifteen minutes. So I didn't know, so I guess my question, my question at the time is, I was probably feeling overwhelmed and said, I can't do this. But I can probably do that this week. So.
Okay.
It says fifteen minutes. I goes, come on, you were, you put that on the agenda? So I'm just letting you know, I'll probably do that this week.
Alright, thank you.
Very good, alright. Honestly, fifteen minutes, geez, that is.
It must have been a.
Obviously, it hit me at a very bad time. I don't have anything to do with this. I have not put down a list of legal priorities so that we can review them. I did hear from Caroline with regard to the bedbugs, because I, we had a chat about that. She still needs to get material to our legal folks, so she will be doing that ASAP. Oh, okay, I don't know this next item. So Michael, you sound like you know this one. Our dog waste downtown, village vet, okay.
I had a nice conversation with our vet this afternoon, or this morning, actually. While I was taking my dog out for a walk, and then professionally taking the dogs to the vet this afternoon. He was complaining about the amounts of dog feces that have been showing up around town, specifically on the sidewalks in the village. I mean, it's all, it's on, just around every sidewalk in the village, but mostly on Front Street is what he's been noticing. He's put up a sign, there's a little green space in front of his shop and his, his, his practice to the right of the door. He's put a sign that says, you know, no dog following, or it says something out of effect that transmits disease, blah, blah, blah. And he has said that he's willing to donate some of those signs if the town would like to put them up in strategic places. They're like, I think he paid close to a hundred dollars a sign because it's got some, it's customized signs, it's not just, you know, don't let your dog, you know.
Is there a reason why you wouldn't want to accept the offer in place of?
I can take a picture, and I should have taken a picture of this gentleman to, and set it to you all, just to see what they look like. But it's, it's an issue. I mean, they're everywhere.
We've talked, we have talked about this before.
It's gotten worse again, so.
I, I, do you have an objection to just having, yeah, so I think Michael, just go for it.
We had, just in my, we've had to put up a little, or we're throwing up a little garden fence because people just walk, the dogs, they crap on your front lawn and they walk away. They don't bother to pick it up, so.
We must have an ordinance from looking at the chief of police.
We do.
And I have to, around Mike's area, Front Street, all that area is really bad.
But we have to see them, right? We have to.
We have to catch them in the act, or have someone who's willing to, to testify if need be against them. We have spoken with several residents on Front Street about the issue. It's been reported to us. And we've actually written a summons to one person. So we're kind of hoping that the word will get out now that.
Is that recent? Is that fairly recent?
Three weeks ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, good, thank you.
I mean, he was mentioning that, you know, if he has to, he'll put up cameras in front of his store and, you know, and next to his business. But he's not, he's hoping not to have to go to that expense. It's like five hundred dollars for what he's been looking at. He doesn't really want to have to spend that. He's willing to give us some signs and put up a dog.
Yeah, let's, let's, try this.
And you have to imagine that, you know, it makes him look bad too, because, you know, people may just assume, oh, you know, people going to the vet and they crap on the sidewalk and, you know, but it's, so he's, I mean, he's just as concerned, so.
Well, we appreciate that.
Just, so I'll let him know.
Thank you, thank you very much.
We've been investigating the possibility of purchasing like a, like a deer camera or a wildlife camera that we could stick on Front Street just for that purpose. But, but there are other purposes that we could use it for too, as well. We have some trespass issues that we got nuts, so I've been an officer now looking around to see what we can do. So we've been thinking about doing this for a couple of years. This might be the year to actually, to do it.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
And if, if we could, you know, we could, because, you know, once we sort of fix, fix the problem somewhere, we just, you know.
Move it.
Move it, move it to the next, next issue, right.
You can understand, I mean, it's not appropriate, but you can understand on the green space, you know, like the little patches where the signs are, they put a milk, to understand someone not picking it up there. It's not right, but on the sideline, it's just my word.
Or somebody else's lawn, when they have a lawn, that's maybe.
Yeah, that would be me. No, not me doing it, but I might. Yeah.
Well, if the board is willing, I, I see our police chief is here, so why don't we just go to.
Okay, I think it's perfect time. Well, I'll start with the easiest of the first. My first Coffee with the Chief meeting is going to be the thirteenth at ten o'clock at the, at the police department. So a week from this Saturday.
Ten o'clock?
Ten o'clock, maybe. Secondly, the folks were into finished tiling the floor last week. Looks good. So hopefully that will last for a while now, in those, in those areas.
Was that Norm or did Norm subcontracted, or we have a different invoice, or is that colors?
Yeah, Norm subcontracted, but the invoice was for two hundred dollars and that is from Norm himself.
Okay, so we won't get an additional, is it part of, because we did.
It's part, yeah, it's part of the overall purchase order. We pulled, we held back two hundred dollars, because Norm said, if you don't want to tile it, then we'll hold back the two hundred dollars. If you want to tile, then probably after the fact, it's an additional two hundred dollars.
Alright, good, thank you.
Officer Filbert has been accepted to the County's Tactical Accident Reconstruction Team. So finally we have somebody on that team after we've had the high days for a couple of years when Caden Kirkerson left us. So we're pretty excited about that.
So we have had representation in the past, but we haven't now since Kirkerson.
And that won't tell. They meet once a month for training and they call us for emergency call-outs for the, for the accidents. So it shouldn't, shouldn't affect our budget at all. We plan for that, so.
That's great. Now, he is a part-timer, correct?
He's a part-time worker, yes.
So would we, how, how would that work if he is not on duty, or how, how does, how's it work?
If he, if he's on duty and he happens to get the emergency called, he'll notify his supervisors. See if we can call someone to, to cover a shift while he goes. Or if, if not, for some reason, then he'll have to stay and finish his shift. When he's off duty, if he gets called in, because he's a part-timer, it's a straight time for him.
And he would be able to rearrange his other, his other work schedule to?
Yes, yeah. Well, he owns his own business, so he can basically come and go as he pleases.
Okay, that's great. That's really wonderful, so, super. I used to think that too, being retired, I'd be able to, you know.
Sure.
Come and go as I please. Watch baseball games on Monday night, you know, whatever.
Walk into the town of Rollins, alright?
Thank you, thank you. It's nice being here, actually.
Okay, four purchase orders. The first one is purchase order number one-one-nine-zero made out through Two Way Communications. Is for our annual recertification of our four in cruiser radar units for three hundred dollars. That's line item number two-eighty-seven, and that comes out of radio repair. And this is a yearly expenditure.
Who checks that purchase order one-one-nine-zero, Two Way Communication for four radar certifications, which is yearly at seven hundred five dollars a piece, for a total of three hundred dollars.
Second. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
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 Purchase order number one-one-seven-eight, you seek us to business machines. This is for our yearly maintenance agreement for our copier unit downstairs. And that will come out of line on number two-zero-one, which is our office expense account, and that's five hundred and seventy-four dollars.
Purchase order number one-one-seven-eight, you seek us business machines for yearly maintenance agreements on the copier, five hundred and seventy-four dollars.
Second. Actually, I have questions, but not because I'm concerned about this, more for our own purposes. Could you remind me, the, this five hundred dollars covers what?
It covers all maintenance on the unit and all toner.
Paper?
No, you supply your own paper.
You supply your own paper.
But it's, it's.
So, but if you have a problem, you just call them up?
If you have a problem, you call them up, and they're usually here within twenty-four hours and making any necessary repairs.
Is it a color printer?
And any toner, you just call them up and they, they send a toner. We usually, usually try to bring them to pick it up, because they send it and you have a potions fee.
Okay.
And it's like twelve dollars for each one that they send. So I just send someone home real quick to pick it up.
And is it a color printer?
Yes.
So it's a total of, we had some capital expenses at the beginning. Did we put this in place or not?
We do. We have a three-year lease agreement with them, and it was three thousand some change for three years. And this should be our, I think, actually twenty eighteen, I think for five or six months in the twenty eighteen, then the lease agreement is done. We purchase it for a dollar, then it's ours. However, if we continue with the maintenance agreement, it's still, they take care of all the maintenance at their expense and they provide all the toner at their expense.
Okay. At some point, might they say, we're not gonna maintain this for five hundred some odd dollars. You're gonna have to get a new machine. Is that possible?
I suppose it's possible, but it wouldn't be, I mean, the life of the machine is ten to fifteen years. And we originally signed the contract, and I think they promised us that the maintenance agreement wouldn't go up for six or seven years anyway. So. I mean, if they went out of business, then, then you'd be stuck having to look for somebody else. But, you know, Seco's business has been around for some time, so I haven't seen that happen.
Yeah, I know, I'm mostly, mostly just getting background data for our own, our own copier here, just trying to.
But if the machine is like, like, like our, our former machine, it was just so old that they just says, it's really not worth you paying for the maintenance agreement.
Right.
Because it's gonna cost you too much to maintain that old machine. You're better off to, to lease for, for, for a new one, so.
And what is the copier brand? Do you, do you happen to know, you know, Ricoh or Xerox or whoever makes these things these days?
I can picture, you have them on the front of it, but.
Yeah, that's okay. That's alright. It was not too worried, not too worried. Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
I can let you know.
Any other questions and comments that aren't really relevant to this purchase order?
Nope.
Alright, then I will call a question. Those in favor say aye.
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 That's one of those things you look at every day, but you don't realize, you know.
Exactly.
You're just in the.
What is it?
What's the right name?
It's that you asked me to look at. I'm looking at every copier. There's a lot of Ricohs out there, by the way. Just wanted to let you know.
Yeah, I guess they're good, right?
We do, we're, yeah, mysterious.
Yeah, we're a little.
Are it, Ricoh?
Yeah. Purchase order number one-one-seven-seven made out to Two Way Communications. And this is to replace the push bumper that was damaged by the lady who backed into it. This will come out of the reimbursement account until such time that either the court pays us back directly or the, the young lady that the cruiser will pay us back directly.
And the amount is?
Also, five hundred and sixty dollars.
Who took that purchase order one-one-seven-seven, a Two Way Communication for one push bumper replacing our cruiser number seventy-one for five hundred and sixty dollars.
Second. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
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 And the last purchase order that I have is who would like to upgrade our, or if you purchase a decent crime scene camera. Right now, all we have is the little ones that we have inside the, and the glove box for, for each, each vehicle, the little handheld ones. So we're looking at getting a Canon EOS Rebel T-six camera with a complete accessory package, which includes, you know, macro lens, a macro lens, two, two other lenses. It's capable for low-light situations. It is digital, photographs in and video, as well as it's wireless. It comes with a detachable flash unit, tripod, and carrying case. And we'll shoot one-on-one, you know, replicas. So if we have a fingerprint or something like that, we can shoot them one-on-one as opposed to trying to zoom in and out with the little handheld ones that we have now. And this is something that we've been looking to do for a couple of years. We just haven't done it. So it is an anticipated expenditure on our equipment count this year for six hundred and fifty-five dollars. So we have purchase order number one-one-eight-nine. Reversal to me, I'll just order it through Walmart. Comes out of our equipment count line item number two-eighty. And again, that's for six hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Why don't you move, then we can ask the.
Purchase order number one-one-eight-nine for one Canon EOS Rebel T-six camera for six hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Second. Okay, so my question is, the department needs only one such?
Just one, that's all we need.
So, so this is not, not a spot thing? This is when something has happened and you, you call.
Correct. We'll place it in our, in our crime scene kit downstairs. So when we have a burglary or, or a major accident or something like that. and we have certain kits that we grab for certain situations, this will be placed in the kit, and off it goes.
Okay. Alright, that was sort of my question.
So, when you were searching around, and I'm not trying to micromanage the department, but, did you check Hunt's Camera Shop, any chance? They have an online presence, but they have a physical shop in Manchester, in some Massachusetts, I guess, but I know they, they have very competitive prices.
I haven't.
And so, or you, or if you might wanna check on it, it's just Hunt's, like, H U N T S.
Okay.
They, um, and if you, if you, I mean, if you bought it from the Manchester, I would pick it up, drive it every day for work, anyway, so... But, um, you might actually get, you might get a better deal.
I'll check it out.
They have all those accessory packages and all that, that's what...
So, uh...
Will you, will you authorize up to?
Yeah.
Six hundred and fifty-five, and then we'll go from there? And if I see a kid?
I'm not trying to create more work for you, but if you might get a better, might be better get a camera, too.
Alright, are, are there other questions?
I'm just trying Walmart selling these things, too, Walmart's selling them.
Yeah, no, actually, the Canon EOS Rebel, I mean, even I have heard of something like that, and, so, yeah, I think it's...
It has, it has good reviews online.
Yeah, it's a pretty, it's a pretty popular model. Are there any other questions, concerns? Those in favor say aye.
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 I'm not really a Canon person.
Um, that's all I have for you. I just see if you have a good Space Needs Committee under the police.
Yes.
Here it is, the first day of May already, I'll be together with Caroline, and maybe, maybe the select board will decide on a date to, to meet.
You wanna meet during the day, right? Oh, uh, well, no, because the rest of them can't, you know.
Probably night time for, for one of the others, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I missed what you said.
No, no, well, enter my thought form, it's not gonna work.
My question was, you know, there is a, an, an email distribution list that I've created, but Howard is not on it, because I don't have an email for Howard, does he have one?
He has an email. I can text him, once we know the date and time, I can, I can send him a text.
Okay, so just keep that in mind, if you start to use that distribution list, then Howard, Howard is not on it.
The first Tuesday of the month is always planning boards, so, I mean, obviously, I could get tomorrow night, but just as we're planning ahead, it's something we really keep in mind.
And we have training, police training next Tuesday, the ninth. So, maybe the eleventh, Thursday?
Is Thursday would be better.
Okay. What's a good time for you?
I mean, um, uh, six or, or later is better for me. There are people who chances to get home. I know Bill's only over, Dover, Kim's like in, maybe, so, people are all relatively nearby.
Sure.
To get home from work, so, anytime after six works for me. Or if we wanna do, you said the ninth, it doesn't work, if you could have got training.
Correct, we have training, yeah.
And there's already another meeting for the, uh, tenth, so yeah, the eleventh, maybe the fourth, the following week, I guess, I don't know.
Okay, so...
Want to shoot for six-thirty, then?
Yeah.
Do you have a planning time with me? Eleven to six-thirty. I'll let Caroline know, and send it out.
Well, let me put it in my calendar.
Anything else?
I have, yeah, there's one, says the guy's trying to get his phone to flip, we're gonna get, we're gonna get it. The road race on, on Saturday, I hear we had some, had an incident on Old Biggo Hill Road.
Well, I guess the gentleman was in Somersworth, became a rate for some reason.
He was on the Somersworth side?
He was on the Somersworth side.
Okay.
And this was after he had given folks permission to park there, and...
Yeah.
I, I don't know, he would, he made the call, however, when my officer went over there, he was not home, so he spoke to his significant other, and she said, I don't know, we just went out yelling at three people, but that, there weren't any issues that I'm aware of. We needed one person who got lost, so she ran the road back instead of going through the trails. And I guess there were several folks that had numerous insect bites, bites, because they didn't have enough spray to, like, out there.
Yeah, we brought from...
I got the bugs are pretty heavy out there.
We brought from lizard to mosquito.
Yeah. Alright, the, the, it was just, um, I thought he lived in Rollins, so it's not our problem, I guess, then, it's, oh, well.
Well, the race, the race.
I know, but it was originally reported that it was the, the family that has a property that's, abouts the trail, but then it was reported that it was, uh, another person, so, I just wanted to make sure we didn't have any ongoing problems, but, no.
Did we wanna talk to Chief Ducharme non-public? Sure.
About what?
We had mentioned that last, you had mentioned wanting to talk to him last week, so here he is, so we can, uh...
And I can't say what I want, as a personality?
Oh, a good personality.
Okay, I'm moving on to non-public session for personality.
Broke, oh, Michael.
Yeah.
Jody?
Yes.
Suzanne, yes. Okay.
I'm gonna meet here, right?
Their dogs on Church Street, where the snowbanks were, and not pick it up. So, as the snow melted, dog poop was remaining on the sidewalk, because people were not willing to go into the snowbank on Church Street where the sidewalk was and pick up their dog poop. So, if you're thinking about putting up signs, maybe...
One on Church Street, um...
One on Church Street.
Have you noted that?
I will.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Anything else?
I have one, on, with the dog waste, when there was some filling, they had some really nice containers for dog poop bags, but they were up, they weren't like garbage cans, they were up on poles, and just...
Well, I've seen, I've seen them in parking lots and various places, you know, where they, they provide the, you know, a little plastic bag to deposit. Some of the conversations that we've had here, that this board has had in the past, is, you know, we need a, there, there's nobody assigned to empty those. And so I think, I think they had tried something like that down at one of the parks, and, you know, just kinda overflowed, and people will use them for, for regular trash, and...
Well, if it's small enough, you can't use it for regular trash, so, opening has to be just, you know, a little...
Yeah, I mean, I think it, I, I think it's a good idea to have stuff like that. You know, if somebody wants to sort of champion that and bring up a proposal to us, and the board member wants to, you know, champion something like that, uh, you know, personally?
Dog waste man.
Pardon?
I'm the dog waste man now.
You're what?
Dog waste man now.
You're the dog waste man, that would be wonderful, Michael.
I'll look into it.
Okay, perfect. I mean, the containers themselves, I mean, are not all that expensive, I mean, I think it would be the town's budget to be able to manage it. We just need a, like, a process, I think, so that they don't create an unintended, too many unintended consequences. Any other comments or questions? Well, then, board? Alright, I think the board is ready, we have, and it's, uh, eight forty-six, so, thank you, everybody.